I would like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome our viewers on television. And our first item tonight is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who isn't already on the agenda who would like to address the committee? Okay, seeing no hands. Apparently our student representatives took the snow day really seriously.
At least I got one email from them that's giving me the heads up.
And so we're already down to old business. I'm looking to my committee members, is there anybody want to address anything from the old business list at this evening's meeting? Okay. Also to my committee members, is there any new business that you want to bring up? All right. You can tell it's a snow day. The superintendent's report. Dr. Majestus.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Just two things to talk about tonight. One is obviously we had a snow day today.
Not mirey.
It is, I have to give a lot of credit to our grounds people in the district, custodians. I'm not sure if you took a look at the grounds here at PCIS and, you know, it's going to be very, very cold this week and our mission was to get things down and treated so that we can actually have a safe start tomorrow. So the storm, you know, from Cedarville, two inches all the way to, you know, west Plymouth, we had about six, almost seven inches. So it really rains across the district. So, but we're in good shape. We're ready to go tomorrow and our people were up at midnight and started clearing. And when I talked to Mr. Montreux on about three this morning, they were just having a hard time keeping up. There was a really sharp band of snow, but we were able to do that. And I want to give them a great deal of credit for getting our schools ready for tomorrow. Last week, we did have our ambassador, Japan ambassador orientation for our students and it went well. Our students are very excited. They asked a lot of questions and we do have officially 15 travelers. They have all committed and they've paid their deposit. And we will be working with, our friends, Ms. Hunt will be working with Tyler in Japan to get our schedule in place and we should have a good trip ahead of us. So just looking forward to that. And the next thing that I have, Dr. Sorenson, is just moving on to our health education discussion. And this is really a continuation of last week's discussion and as we get closer and closer to the end of the school year and we will start, you know, having more and more concrete discussion about what it's going to look like. I did talk last year, I mean, last week about Mary coming to school committee to have a discussion about our elementary health program and what we've been working on. And I'd like to invite Mary to the table. Mary, I'm sure she'll say a little bit, but Mary is a colleague of mine. Many, many years ago, when I first came to Plymouth, 20 years ago, and one of my very first meetings was with all the coordinators, I was a coordinator for curriculum here in Plymouth and Mary was the health coordinator for the district. And it was a grant-funded physician. We lost the grant and Mary went back into the classroom and then she retired and went off to great and wonderful things. She's an author, is very successful in health education world. And when we were talking about revamping our health curriculum, Dr. Campbell and I were talking about who can we consult with? And Mary came to mind right away. I reached out to Mary and Plymouth is still near and dear to her heart. So she came down and she's here tonight and I want to welcome her. And Mary, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Majestus. It is a pleasure to be here. And good evening, members of the school committee and members of the Plymouth Public Schools Administration and those of you that are watching at home. I'd like to introduce myself a little bit more. Gary did a great job, but I have these slides all prepared, so I have to follow them in sequence, so just bear with me. My name is Mary Conley and I am the Program Chair for Skills-Based Health Social Emotional Learning at Cambridge College. We have a brand-new campus at 500 Rutherford Avenue in Charleston, the old Hood's Milk Plant. It's a beautiful place. I am also the author of Skills-Based Health Education, second edition. This textbook is used across the country in schools that prepare health education candidates and they use my textbook to train them to be skills-based social emotional learning educators. I am also the past Vice President of Health Education for the state organization MAPR and MAPR stands for Massachusetts Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. And I am also a volunteer for Shape America. That is our national organization, the Society for Health and Physical Educators. Currently, I am the Chair of the Social Emotional Learning Committee. I've done many webinars for them, I've done many sessions at many conferences, so I do my share of volunteer work for Shape America. And I am a health education consultant, currently working with you here in Plymouth. My other clients are Marblehead Public Schools, Braintree Public Schools, and a myriad of others, all of which are transforming their curricula from content-centered to skill-centered and aligning everything with social emotional learning. So some of you may remember me as the former coordinator, Director of Elementary Physical Education and PK to 12 Health Education. It was a wonderful time here in Plymouth. I loved it. I loved the community and I loved teaching the students of Plymouth. I was the middle school here in this building for a long time with Lyman and then went to South and worked for Patty for a little bit and then, as Gary said, retired. So I am very pleased to be back and this brings back all sorts of memories of study hall in here, which I know there's no more of. So I thought that, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, that I take a few steps backwards and tell you a little bit about social emotional learning and skills-based health education so that you understand where we're moving to. Up on the slide you will see on the right, the National Health Education Standards Book. I was a member of that committee. My name is listed in the inside page. I take particular enjoyment in signing my name when people have that book. And there are eight standards, National Health Education Standards. The first one is content. The second one is analyzing influences. And this is an important one because young people, all of us actually, need to know what influences us. Is it an outside influence? Is it an inside influence? Is it a positive influence? Is it a negative influence? So that's a very important skill for our young folks to have. Standard three is accessing valid, reliable sources of information. This is really important for young people because they go to the internet as a source of information and they need to know whether the source they're looking at is a valid and reliable source of information or if it's Wikipedia, which they will say they are not valid and reliable, but students may not know that. Standard four is interpersonal communication. Here is where students learn negotiation skills, conflict resolution skills, dealing with bullies, and so forth. Standard five is decision-making, a very important step for all of us to know and for students to learn the process of making a decision rather than an impulse decision which may not be a healthy one. Standard six is goal-setting, a real procedure once again of establishing needs and setting goals and tracking progress toward meeting that goal. Practicing healthy behaviors is a general standard and includes a myriad of things such as washing hands, different personal health behaviors, and sort of is a catch-all for anything that doesn't fit in any of the others. Standard eight is my very favorite, that's advocacy. And when I was at South High School, I was the advisor for a program called Peer Leadership. And I started that program with maybe five or six students, nine through 12. And they were very timid, they were very shy. I had several components. One of them was peer education, peer tutoring, teacher assisting, new student program. The one that really shows the power of advocacy is the peer education. We would design skits and we would take them to the elementary school. And the students always liked to go to the school that they graduated from and they loved to see their old teachers and their principals. And then they performed for the youngsters and they were fabulous. When they would present to the staff and to parents, they were fabulous. We had over 100 students in that program when I left it. It was a wonderful program. You give young people the knowledge and skill they need to empower them and get out of their way. Advocacy is a really important skill and it's a great one to work with kids from all ages. On the other side of the screen is the SEL graphic and I'll share more about that in just a moment. So here it is in Bigger Than Life. This is a graphic from castle.org. Castle is the collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning. It is a national organization that has done a wonderful job in convincing everyone across the country that SEL is different from anything else and must be taught separately and so forth. And I'm here to try to convince you or to inform you that it is very similar to skills-based health education and that they align beautifully. And if you have both SEL and skills-based health in your district, you have a one-two punch that aligns beautifully and will provide the students with great skills for their academic performance and also for the challenges of life. When you look at this, you can see SEL is in the center. The two orange components are self-awareness and self-management. Those have to do with the person themselves. The responsible decision-making is a process and then the two green ones, social awareness and relationship skills, have to do with their interactions with other people. According to Castle, social emotional learning involves a coordinated classroom, school-wide, family, and community practices that help students develop those five skills in the middle. You can see they also have wraparounds that include curriculum and instruction, school-wide practices and policies, and family and community partnerships. And in a moment, you will see how closely it aligns with the WISC model from ASCD and So you may be saying, Mary, what is that connection between the national standards and the SEL competencies? If you take a look at self-awareness, the first of the competencies listed there, you'll see a definition of what self-awareness is and then underneath it, you will see several sub-competencies. Part of that self-awareness, and I guess I have to put my glasses on to see over there, is that it talks about influences. So, the perfect pairing, it aligns perfectly with our standard two, analyzing influences. If we go to social awareness, you can see that it talks, to social awareness, you can see that it talks about resources. That aligns beautifully with our standard three, accessing valid and reliable information. If we go down to relationship skills and the sub-competency of communication, that aligns perfectly with standard four, interpersonal communication. Go over to self-management, note, we're going up to responsible decision-making and that's a direct alignment with our standard five. If you go over to self-management and take a look at goal-setting, that aligns with our standard six, goal-setting, and then go up to self-management, that aligns beautifully with our own standard seven, practicing healthy behaviors. And then last but not least, advocacy, because it is involving communicating, speaking, listening, and writing that aligns beautifully with the communication sub-competency of the SEL standards. So you can see that that's a perfect pairing and it's a one-two punch. If you have both of those together, you are providing wonderful skills and knowledge to the young folks that allows them to be prepared for life's challenges. So let's take a little bit of a deeper dive into SEL. It's the process of acquiring knowledge, attitudes, and skills needed to recognize and manage emotions, very important thing to be able to do, demonstrate care and concern for others in this society we are in now where there's so much incivility. This is a really important competency and skill to have, establish positive relationships, make responsible decisions, and manage challenging situations. Let's go over to the skills-based side and see if you see anything that aligns nicely. Well, look at that. The process of acquiring knowledge, attitudes, and skills through the National Health Education Standards, the same as the beginning part of SEL. The alignment is very, very clear. Next, let's take a look at the similarities and the differences between SEL and skills-based SEL is the big picture. When the organization Castle talks about implementation of SEL, they talk about the whole school. They talk about all of the teachers, all of the disciplines, everything that happens in the school, in the lunchroom, on the bus, everywhere. It's systemic implementation of the program, which is great. You currently use Second Step. Second Step has the same kind of an implementation plan. Second Step happens to be an approved curricula for SEL. So here we have another pairing and another matching up. It is embedded in the strategic plan, staffing, and professional learning and the budgets. It is implemented through direct practice such as in health education, such as in physical education, as well as in integrated instruction. In English Language Arts, for example, we are connected to them, Skills-Based Health and ELA, because of the written skills, the communication skills, the listening skills, the presentation skills. So there's direct practice as well as integrated instruction. It drives school-wide practices and policy, informs how adults and students relate to one another. School climate is really important for students to feel safe, to learn, to come to school, creating a welcoming, participatory, and caring climate for learning. And finally, it shapes partnerships with families, with community members, and highlighting engagement, trust, and collaboration. Skills-based health ed is different. It is targeted. It is PK to 12 instruction, comprehensive PK to 12. It is a coordinated approach to teaching health education based on the National Health Education Standards. It is taught by licensed professionals, trained professionals, supported by district budgets and professional development. Curriculum varies by district and is sometimes integrated with other subjects. The point that I think is important here is that there is no license for SEL, currently anyway, and I don't know if there is one planned. However, there is a license for health education. There is a license for physical education and we are trained to deliver skills, whether it's skills-based health ed or skills in the gymnasium. We are licensed, we are trained, and we know how to deliver this kind of instruction. Instruction is flexible and responds to district, state, and federal policy. I remember many times coming to school and being asked by the principal, Mary, this happened over the weekend, make sure, please cover this in your class. And that's what you do when you're a health educator. You cover whatever needs to be covered because life happens to our youngsters. And in health education, it is the perfect place to address those issues and give the young people the skills they need to cope with what's going on. And it provides the opportunity to improve health and well-being and academic performance through the whole school, whole community, and whole child wellness committee, and I'll talk more about that in a second. So here are two graphics that are interesting. On the left is SEL, you've seen it before. In the center, notice it says SEL and the competencies are around it. And then you have the supporting rings of classroom, the schools, and then the community on the outer ring. Over on the right is the whole school, whole community, whole child graphic. This is a collaborative graphic designed by CDC and ASCD. And what I like about it better than the SEL graphic is that the child is in the center. And around the child, we want the child to be safe and healthy and so forth. And then all of the components around are all of the members of the WISC committee, Wellness Committee. If you have a Wellness Committee in each of your schools, this is what it should look like. And then the wraparound for the community. So what are the similarities? Well, you have classrooms and certainly in health education, you have the classroom, but you also have classrooms in all of your other disciplines where SEL can be taught. Here you have the community and you have a community component, you have a family component, and then you have a wraparound community. You have curriculum and instruction, once again, health education and physical education, both have the curriculum foundation for skills and for SEL. And here you have the practices and the wraparound, the student, that white band, has to do with school policy. So you can see that there's an alignment even in the graphics. They are both very similar and they both try to do very similar things. So why is skills-based classroom the perfect place for SEL? Well, first of all, we are trained. The CAPE, CAPE Organization, the Council for Accreditation of Education Preparation, provides national health education, teacher education, training standards. I served on that Shape America HEAT Committee. We just developed new standards and they're now being implemented into higher education programs that are training teachers of health education. And that training now includes skills, all skills. So as young people graduate from their undergraduate or at my college, when they graduate in the master's program, they will be trained to go out and teach skills. So that's a great advantage. I always give a plug to my college there. There we are, Cambridge College. And we train health educators. We provide an initial license in health education. We have two online certificate courses, one in physical education, one in health education, and we have a face-to-face certificate targeting physical educators who are being told to teach health and do not have the background. And we have the credentials. Health education teachers are licensed or we're certified to deliver skills-based health ed. And we have undergraduate training, we have graduate training, so that we have the credentials to do this job. Some teachers are nationally certified. If they are, part of that, part of the requirements of national board certification is to know how to deliver skills-based health education. So that's another advantage to having a licensed person and nationally certified person is even, that's a great advantage. If Plymouth is involved in P21, 21st Century Learning Skills, it is very consistent with skills-based health education. And if you look at the bottom component, life and career skills, that is where you would find SEL. So there's another alignment for us. Time is set aside for skills-based health education. We have time in the school day set aside for the implementation of skills-based health education and SEL. So here is Mary's plan. Mary's plan is to take a look at the elementary health education program. Years ago, when I was here, we had a wonderful program. We had two elementary specialists who went into their own specifically assigned elementary schools. We use Second Step, which I know is still being used. It is an SEL-approved curriculum, so it's an excellent choice to have in your elementary system. The educators would teach the lead-off lesson. The classroom teacher would be in the classroom, watching the health educator model the lessons. The health educator would leave the follow-up lessons for the classroom teacher along with all of the materials. And the expectation was that the classroom teacher would continue that instruction through the week. And the health educator was present there for support in any questions that the classroom teacher may have. That is the same procedure that we are recommending now. I know there is one health educator that is dedicated to elementary health and that two are proposed. So it's a great opportunity to revitalize a program and a system of implementation and delivery that was very successful and I'm sure can be very successful again. On the secondary level, the middle school and the high school, we have dedicated, trained, licensed health and physical educators that can deliver skills-based health in PE and SEL. And the benefit is that you would have licensed people delivering this instruction. And it also takes the burden off the elementary classroom teacher who, they are awesome in what they can do in planning from seven different frameworks. It saves them having to do one more because they're seeing how the class should be taught and they are given the material, so they don't have to do their own planning, they just have to follow the lead of the elementary health specialist. And it worked very well many years ago and I think it will work very well now. So the elementary plan is that the elementary health educator will provide and model the lead-off lesson while the classroom teacher observes. The elementary health educator leaves the follow-up lessons and the materials with the classroom teacher to facilitate instruction during the week. Currently, there is one dedicated elementary teacher and two are proposed. Physical educators will also be involved in the delivery of SEL and skills education. Physical education, according to the Shape America standards, is all skills-based. It also has a great connection in standard three and four to health education. So coordinating those two disciplines will be a huge advantage to the district. So the steps that we are thinking in preliminary planning are that we would do a needs assessment. In the packet you will be receiving, there are sample needs assessment forms. They are preliminary. We think they will work. They may need adjustments as we move along. But we will do a needs assessment for curriculum. What is being done? What is the staffing? What are the needs of the staffing? And what are the materials you have and what materials do you need? We'll take a look at that, analyze it, and plan to fill in the gaps with an action plan. Provide professional development, not only for the elementary classroom teachers, but for principals. You are so fortunate to have Gary and Chris as your administrative leaders for your district. As a consultant and working in districts without that support, changes like this just do not happen. Principals need to understand what skills-based health is. They need to understand what SEL is. Faculty, staff members need to know that they're already teaching SEL. They need to identify all of those parts of SEL. And I can guarantee you, if you gave them that list and asked them to check off, which of these subcomponents do you teach? You will find that many of them teach many of those sub-competencies, but they don't know it. So part of what we need to do is to have them identify that they are teaching SEL. Let the students know they are teaching SEL, they're learning SEL, their parents understand they're learning SEL. And be able to use the big picture of school implementation and also the targeted instruction in the classroom and in the gymnasium. That's a huge part of it. And the principals need to be really actively involved in that because without their support, the teachers can do their job, but we really do need the administrators to support that work. Professional development will be available for everyone. And I also encourage people to look at Cambridge College into our initial licensure program. We're always looking to partner with districts. I would love to partner with Plymouth and do some great things with the staff here in Plymouth. And then when we are in a position where things are in place, coaching is necessary so that people have a chance to have me look at them and, you know, Mary, am I doing this right? Is this okay? And continue that coaching and support through the years. So as of right now, that is the plan. Do you have any questions?
We have a lot of questions, but they're hard to articulate. There's a lot here.
Okay.
Ms. Haywood.
I guess, yes, there is a lot here and to tell you the truth, I really haven't read through everything just given the short period of time. But I am going to ask a question. So when you talk about the intermingling or the intermeshing of the goals with the competencies, with the SEL competencies, when I look at the social awareness aspect and I see that you've mentioned that number three, the accessing valid information and products and services, can you please explain to me how can you please explain to me how accessing valid information, products and services somehow intermeshes with empathy, appreciation for diversity, respect for others, and perspective-taking?
Sure, and thank you for the question. If you take a look at the definition provided by Castle underneath the competency.
Yes.
Part of that definition at the very end talks about resources for families and for community and so forth.
Yeah.
So it's important if you're accessing resources and information that they be valid and reliable. So that's the connection there.
Okay, but the larger component for me is the ability to take the perspective and empathize with others, including those from diverse backgrounds and cultures. So I can see how one portion of this is a number three, but I don't understand how that, what else in that whole, like, the goal setting actually would perhaps cover the first portion of that definition.
Okay, and that's a great question too. So the connection there is resources and accessing valid and reliable information. Also in that component, when you are designing skills-based health education, it's very interactive and it's very student-centered. And you engage the student by developing a prompt. And the prompt can be about anything. But in that particular case, if we were talking about social awareness, we would develop a prompt that, we would pick out which of those subcompetencies we wanted to target. And we would develop the prompt around the needs of the students and figuring out which of those subcompetencies we feel as though they mostly need, based on the needs of the school and the students. And in that, if resources are a part of it, that's where we would link into Standard Three. So it is very flexible in how you design skills-based health education. It's important for students to know where in the community they go to, where in the school they go to, and if that source is a valid source of information. But that's one part of it. And as you pointed out, there are many other parts in the subcompetencies that are a part of that social awareness. That would be all part of the planning. One of the things that I would recommend is, and I don't know if you do it or not, is administering the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. You do do it?
Yes.
And because part of the planning is to take a look at your needs based on data. That's really the first thing you look at. What are the needs of your kids? And then from there, the next question is, which of these skills, which of these competencies would help reduce that risk? And then from there, you target the information and you target the skills and the competencies you feel as though would do that job. So it's tailor-made to meet the needs of the young folks in front of the teacher.
I.
We still have the floor.
Okay. I guess I could understand that in terms of self-awareness, but I don't know if, I don't know if it truly explains like social awareness. And I just, I think just given the fact that just in this present age, there are just so many, I guess, how we categorize like diversity. It is just so vast as opposed to years before. And I don't know if it necessarily, like, I don't know if it's community resources as opposed to more like education.
So I'm trying to get back to the paper that you're looking at. So just give me a moment here. And I'll get there soon. It's right in the front, I know. Pardon me, I'm sorry. Here it is. So you're talking about social awareness and perspective-taking, empathy-appreciating. Can't see quite that far, but respect for others. So the connection to Standard Three is in the resources. But when you are designing a prompt for social awareness, it might be a prompt about diversity if that is an issue that is some, if that's an issue in the school, in that classroom, then the prompt would surround itself with questions about perspective-taking.
Okay. Does it necessarily have to be an issue or in, like, does it have to be an issue that's happening or specifically in a classroom? Or is it an, is it education that's needed for the student, like, in everyday life?
And every, of course it is. Yeah, of course it is. So once again, that would be a great consideration when we're planning, that our issues of diversity across the curriculum.
Okay.
And if that's an issue and a concern and a need, then it certainly should be there.
Dr. Mieses.
Yeah, and I think that's a great question, Ms. Haywood. I think one of the things that is, I think we're positioned in a great period of time for us to take a look at what this community, what this educational community really values and exactly what we promote and what we work on within the components of this curriculum. So I think when it comes to social awareness issues, diversity, I mean, we can take things that may or may not be happening in our society locally, but we can take a look at things around the world to see how it impacts, how we as a community are sharing accurate, appropriate information for kids to make good decisions. So I think that is something that, from my standpoint, the consistency of that from school to school, classroom to classroom is really important. But I think Mary's breakdown of how we do it systematically in this district is what is going to make this successful for us. It may not work for another district, but I think it's going to really work for what we believe is important to our school. Now, keep in mind that this can morph from year to year because.
It should.
Yes. And I think that's important, that we are evolving to get to some key things. I mean, if we had this slide up 15 years ago, what would come to mind would be totally different than what comes to mind today. And it needs to be that adaptable.
Michelle, I thought I saw your hand.
I'm still trying to process some things, but I can just start, just really quickly. And I'm not sure if this is a question for you or if it's a question for Dr. Miesa and Dr. Campbell. I've been thinking about a lot what you said at the end of our last week's meeting, where you said, you know, a teacher can teach 25% outside of their licensed area. So my, I guess my question is, when you said that to me, it kind of, I get that because you need the flexibility within the school. But in some ways, I feel like, it's like asking a physics teacher, no matter how smart that person is, to go and teach Spanish or French or something, you know, or, you know, history, anything. And so when we were talking about, when you just brought up the fact that, you know, there'll be licensed and trained and you have that certificate program through your college or any other college that the professionals decide to take it, is that something that we would ask our PE teachers that say they don't have that accreditation, but that endorsement? Would they be asked to take that class in order to feel more comfortable? Because just because you can doesn't mean that you're comfortable doing it.
It's a great question. You want to answer it?
I'll answer it. I just. So one of the things that I think is very clear, and this goes back to when Mary and I first started talking about, Mary and I and Chris started talking about this, is that there are certain pieces of this model that is an absolute natural fit for the classroom teacher. Where the classroom teacher, they do it, they do it well, they feel very comfortable, they have the background. And they feel that, and I think they probably would feel more comfortable with some of the content pieces that they could take. I think our work is going to come into how we break those down and who is, what area is the best to actually teach it? The most efficient alignment of what their skills are, alignment with their training is. So not only when we do an analysis of what we have for resources, analysis of how things are today, but it's an analysis of what is the natural connection, natural fit between the staff that we have now, the staff that we may need to add some additional training to. But I think that's really the work that we need to do. Keep in mind, the ability for a classroom teacher to address certain topics, the relationship that they have is going to make that much more enriching to that environment because they already have that background with kids. So I think it's a matter of us just breaking it down and identifying exactly what, it's almost like coding in a sense. That there would be a coding of the curriculum to identify what is the natural fit for the specific pieces of the curriculum.
And that comes from the needs assessment that's done within, now, is it just the community in the school? Or are we asking parents and students and things?
Well, from my perspective, well, from my perspective, it's what we have for resources and what we are doing inside the school. Because it's the delivery, the acquisition is coming within the school. And I think the alignment is really with what we can do for implementation. And there are things that are in place right now that are already working. And like what Mary was talking about before, I think some teachers are acutely aware of how they're doing it, why they're doing it, and a lot of them are doing it. And it's how do we make sure that everyone identifies that, ah, okay, this really fits exactly with what we're trying to do as a model. And that identification's important, but to your question, it's really an internal assessment of where we are.
So no parent reach out to be like, where do you see your child's understanding of self or self-awareness or responsibility, decision-making at different grade levels?
If I could add two things. First of all, professional development is part of the plan. So for the elementary classroom teacher, where we're starting with this, there would be professional development for them. And they're not working outside of their license. So they would be training for a second step. On the secondary level, that's a different issue. And teachers who are, who will be identified to help would receive that extra training and professional development. The second part regarding family, if you recall the WISC model, with all of the components around it, it's health education, physical education, the nurse, the people that work in the kitchens, psychology and counseling, families, community members and so forth. So there should be a family, there should be parents sitting at that wellness committee table. And SEL is one of those components. So that's a perfect place during conversation about, this is what we're thinking of doing, we would like your input. That's a perfect place for parents sitting at the table, representing other parents, to voice their opinion about SEL, what it is and what they feel as though their child needs. So they do have a voice at the wellness table.
Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. Not to repeat everything that Dr. Miesa says or what Mary said as well. There are many standards and skills that the health educator first and foremost needs to take the lead on. And there are, as Mary said and Dr. Miesa said, many of these standards. And when you look at the competencies, the teachers are teaching them through the context of the writer's workshop model, the reader's workshop model, many of the things we're doing in the elementary classroom. So it's, as has already been said, it's identifying those opportunities and helping to refine what that looks like. We're doing it. They just don't, some of them know that they're doing it and some of them may not know that they're doing it. We've been doing some of that work with another grant with our middle schools, but this is bringing it down to the elementary level. And as Mary just said too, so we're working first and foremost on the curriculum. What does that delivery look like, you know, K to five in terms of SEL and all the other skills? And some of those are reinforced in the classroom. Many of them will be reinforced through a health educator as well as our physical education staff. And over time, I imagine that we will be looking at other things and refining those practices in many other ways. What was also said this evening is that the principals and the administration is really critical to that piece too. Because a lot of these, when you look at, again, you look at the Castle model and you're looking at the policies, the school-wide policies and practices, that's really critical in terms of reinforcing those health skills and competencies too. So what kind of practices do you have in your school that promote those things and engage the larger community, families included? So I do definitely see that over time, that we'll be constantly looking at that. And the wellness committee is really critical to that process to really identify all of your practices as a school community, a larger school community in terms of health and wellness education.
Ms. Hunt.
Just two quick questions. One is timeline. I know that, you know, we're all kind of anxious to get going and it's a tipping point right now for, just with everything that's gone on, you know, throughout the year and some incidents. And I just, I know that, you know, in the last, second to last slide, you kind of had the steps. But what are we looking at for timeline?
I think we mentioned at last meeting that we would begin this in September.
For September, okay. I just, after looking at the steps, it just looks like a lot of, a lot of work.
We do a lot in the summer. That's what we do. It's, we do as much as we can during the school year when people aren't teaching, but we do a lot of work in the summer to prep for the fall. So we will be doing a lot of that.
Yeah, no, I think the whole picture, it's great. There's definitely a lot of details to work out. But one of the things that struck out to me a little bit was more your language about revitalizing the process and taking that burden off the teacher, because that's an inherent need and that's been a big discussion that we've had as well. So having a lesson in place that they can then utilize without having to, you know, find more details. They have everything that they need in place to move forward. So I look forward to the execution and how it's implemented for sure, but it's refreshing and thank you for all the details.
Oh, you're very welcome.
I want to, I want to, I'm very pragmatic in looking at this. And I'm hearing, I'm hearing Central Office saying that, and you said it as well, many of our, many of these topics are already being addressed by classroom teachers. And like you said earlier, that something could happen on the weekend. And right now, something could happen this past weekend and there's going to be four or five classrooms in our district that are going to be talking about what's happening. So, but being pragmatic, let me just tell you a metaphor. Last week, we had a, we had delayed opening last week. And I was driving to my office and I passed two bus stops. And two bus stops, half a mile apart, had eight-year-old, one eight-year-old girl and one nine-year-old boy at the other bus stop. School was two hours delayed. It made me think, now, I'm not going to indict everybody here, but it made me think, does this child get up by themselves in the morning? Nobody told them there was a two-hour delay and walked to the bus stop? That made me think, what are they missing? What else are they missing in some of these families? So here's the practical part. I think I need to know, as somebody who has some responsibility for education in this community, that emotional awareness, diversity, pick whatever topic you want. These are going to be covered in this grade, these are, like the second step. I need to know the details of how they're covered. You folks will work out. But we need to know that these are the topics that are going to be covered so that when a child gets to the fifth grade, at least our conscience is clear. That's what this is all about. And I hope that that's where we're going to end up. Because when you see some of these families, they're not providing what it is they need to provide. And in all due respect, Ms. Badger, I believe that we don't ask parents what topic they're going to cover in literature or what they're going to cover in the math class. We're going to tell them what we're going to cover.
That's not how I meant it. I meant to ask how they were perceiving it being taught on the.
Or how they were perceiving it. Oh, I misunderstood you, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I think. I don't know if you can address her or not, probably not.
Also, just being. I will take your input in just a second.
I think just, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
I didn't want to. Just like any curriculum though, that we teach, partnership with the family is critical. So how we, you know, if we're teaching math or we're teaching language arts in the elementary schools, how do we engage our families to be a part of that conversation? So we're talking about perspective-taking or we're talking about, you know, responsible decision-making, you know, having, you know, our math curriculum has follow-ups. This is what we taught and this is how you can reinforce it. So how do we help to engage our families over time so that they're an equal partner in that piece? And I think that will only reinforce the work and make families feel more confident because it's a challenge, right? Parenting is a challenge. And I think parenting and being a partner in the school system as a parent can be challenging. So how do we find those opportunities to create that conversation and engage them?
Mrs. Truselli.
I was just going to parlay because the big push, I know since I've been on the school board, is, you know, communication from school to family, family to home, getting families more engaged in their kids' education and the culture in the schools. So this may open up that conversation, you know, which would work in hand-in-hand with that improvement plan.
Ms. Hunt.
Well, so I said I had two questions. That was my second question because putting on my PTA hat, I know that you said it was important to have parents on the wellness committee, but those are going to be the same parents that join everything. I've sat on wellness committees for several schools, you know, throughout my kids. Chris, and even like, you know, recently with the PFLAG thing, and I said that now, next step now is we need to have another forum for parents to hear this. But it's going to be. But it's going to be the parents that come to everything. So I think that's going to be the hardest part is we're going to need to figure out how to get to the parents that aren't as informed, that are leaving their kids at the bus stop two hours before they're supposed to be there. So I think it's going to be really, really important for us to either, you know, do our, like the PTA strategies that I've, I've been trained on for years is to reach them where they are or to try and find other avenues to get at these parents more. Maybe a videotaped forum that can go out to them, that they can see on social media or something like that. But it's, I think that the wellness committee idea is great, but you're not going to get the parents that you need on that.
There was a, a hand in the audience there. Please come up and identify yourself and certainly welcome your input. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Linda Bellocas. I'm the elementary school health teacher for the district. So I think I probably have a pretty good insider view on this. I've been working with Mary and with Dr. Campbell and Dr. Miestis this year. A former teacher here at PCIS from the middle school. So I've been a classroom teacher as well. So I come from that background. I also have a background in health and fitness and nutrition. So the blending of the worlds. So I think I can speak for a classroom teacher as well as a health specialist teacher in saying that this is already being implemented and has blended learning. For example, the fifth grade lesson that we're currently involved in right now has been a lesson on, it started out with the topic of hygiene, but where it's rolled into is a lot about decision-making and role-play. And it's been in a script format where the children have been working in partners and have been presenting it to their classmates. So it has that ELA component to it as well. So these are things that are already happening, that are already very familiar to somebody like a classroom teacher and already are going to be, that are already implemented and it's already kind of going that way without, I think, anybody necessarily having identified that that is what it is.
But that's the need. We have to get it in the structure of a curriculum.
Understand, yeah.
When we're not here 20 years from now, somebody's going to do it.
You have too many incidents.
No, I was just going to, I was just going to reiterate what you just said, Dr. Sorensen, that, right, it's taking that and validating and putting it down in black and white so that we can see that scope and sequence and the core competencies and skills that are happening both by the health educator, the classroom teacher, and how is all this being addressed and where is it being addressed from K to five, in this case, from K to five? So that we can say, you know, with authority that this is how it's done, this is when we do it, and then work on how do we get families to support that? How do we get schools to support those messages too? Because that's important.
Can I add something?
I'm going to give you the last word.
Oh, okay.
But I want to check before the committee. Any other committee members with comments, questions, observations? Mary, you're going to have the last word.
I just wanted to respond to Mrs. Trish Hedy.
Trish Hedy.
Did I say that right? Trish Hedy, I'm sorry. The second step is, is very comprehensive in its implementation and part of it is of direct engagement with parents. There are letters, there are trainings for parents as well as for the bus drivers and for the folks that work in the food service. So it, it's a great choice for involving parents. And to your point, Ms. Hunt, using media and using this beautiful room is a great way to plan different ways of engaging parents. A panel discussion where people have sent in questions and we answer them, having people come up. I think we're limited by our imagination as far as trying to reach out to parents. The fact that folks can stay home in their jammies watching us now is something we can use to promote what it is that we're trying to do. It's easy to sit back on your couch, turn on your school committee meeting and be involved and then maybe provide somehow the technology folks would know, some way for them to give feedback, which would then fold into an agenda for the next time. So I think we're limited by our imagination as to how to reach out to the community. I think it's vital and I think it's vital to involve the parents. You need that parental support. We don't want to see kids out waiting for the school bus when, when school has been delayed. I don't know if we can solve that problem, but we can certainly figure out ways of engaging the parents and the community. And businesses too is another avenue. So it's a complete comprehensive implementation of a program that benefits everybody.
Both of you, I want to thank you for, I want to thank you for addressing the committee. And Mary, I want to thank you for coming, not only for being here, but imparting your knowledge with us.
Thank you.
You know, we're developing this, we want to have a really good curriculum by the time school rolls around September and all of this is important to us, so.
You're very welcome. I'm very pleased to be here. Very nice to meet all of you.
To fruition.
The next item on the agenda is retirements.
Yes, we have one retirement report tonight. Michael Bastoni, who is a, our engineering teacher at Plymouth North High School after 26 years and five months of service.
Wow, Michael, huh?
I know, I was sad when I saw that. On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, I would like to thank Mr. Bastoni for his 25 years of service and wish him a happy retirement.
Correspondence, Mr. Morgan?
No correspondence this evening.
Okay, at this point, let me make a quick announcement and then turn the committee over to Mr. Morgan because the next item on our agenda is the ratification of the contract. Our council has advised Ms. Hunt and myself to refuse ourselves from this discussion because we have immediate family in the district. So we will, actually, council has advised us to actually leave the room, so we're going to go out for coffee. And Mr. Morgan here, we'll be back when you're done.
We have reached a tentative agreement on a successor EAPC teacher contract. The terms of the tentative agreements are set forth in a memorandum of agreement effective 2018 through 2021. I'm looking for a motion relative to the EAPC teachers with respect to the contract ratification.
I move that we ratify the contract for the EAPC teachers.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
Second by Ms. Hayward? Discussion? Dr. Miestis.
Yes. Before the vote, I just want to recognize Ms. Hayward and Ms. Burgess from the committee and also Mr. Costin, Ms. Frye, for their diligent work throughout this process. It was an 18-month process and I just want to thank them for their continued work in getting this to this point tonight. So thank you and I appreciate everything that you were able to do, the time that you put aside to make this happen.
Thank you.
Well said.
Thank you.
All right, I guess, ready for a vote?
We will have to. Well, they'll have to abstain. So why don't we just do a voice, a voice call? Can we do a voice?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Yes.
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 All right, that's unanimous with two abstentions? All right, for the record, the contract has been approved by the Plymouth School Committee.
Excellent. All right, I'd like to call a five-minute recess so we can reconvene with our other two members.
Bring us back into session. Thank you very much for that brief intermission. We're now going to look at next year's school calendar. Dr. Miestis.
Yes, we have the proposed days for next year's school calendar. Dr. Campbell has been working on this diligently for a couple of months and we have dates for you. And this is relative to what we have worked through, different things. You would notice that we do have a primary next March, March 3rd. So it does change things a little bit. And, but with that said, I'll turn it over to Dr. Campbell to see if he has any other comments to add based on the development of the days that we have in front of you.
Thank you. I'll just run through it quickly. You'll notice we're starting a bit earlier than we have in prior years and the contract that you just approved allows for that. So our teachers will be coming back, rather than coming back August 29th, which typically was the earliest we came back. Teachers will be returning to work on the 27th. We'll have students back for the 28th, 29th and then have the four-day Labor Day weekend as we have had in the past, which has been very well received by families and staff alike. Our professional development days are highlighted on the memo. Labor Day, obviously, we'll have in school. Columbus Day, at school. The other days that I want to point out is our full-day professional development day. We do have one full day for professional development. We've decided to make that the first Tuesday in November. Typically, that is a very common date to do those professional development days in communities. It's a good time to do it. One, for weather purposes, if we did it in March, could have a snow day and that would be a shame. We would lose a lot of resources and money as well for the resources that we put into that. So November 5th will be our full-day professional development for staff. There will not be school on that day. Veterans Day is the 11th. We will have the three-day Thanksgiving break, long weekend, 27th, 28th and 29th, as we have in the last couple of years, which has gone really well. Parent conferences in December for both middle and elementary are pointed out there. This winter break, excuse me, the December break will start on the 23rd. And we'll go through the third, so it's two weeks, two weeks. The holidays fall on a Wednesday this year, so rather than go back for two days, we're keeping them out for the week. We did that, the last time it came around, on a Wednesday, we did just that and it went over very well. It was very well received. It does extend the year a little bit, but not much, by a couple of days. We're starting earlier. What else can I point out for you? Graduation will be Saturday, the 6th. And the last day, the 180th day would be June 18th.
And we will typically add five days that we mark on the calendar for snow days. This is not reflected on this calendar, but we typically do that on our calendars that go out.
So if we, if we did have five snow days and that's a Thursday, so it would be one, so it would be, what would that last date be?
25th.
25th. So that's, that's the July 4th weekend, is that the, no, there's not, there's another weekend in between there?
There's another weekend in between, yes.
There is one in between.
Ms. Badger.
So I just have a quick question. So I know that it's important to get our 180 days in and I'm assuming that's why on the 23rd, we're opening schools for just a half-day, the 24th of December? Is it, that, that was my only question, like, we're opening it Monday, the 23rd for a half-day. When, could we just add on and we get out Friday, the 19th? And if we added five days, then it's the 26th? It just seems like a weird thing to do to open a school.
I'm sorry, that's a, that's a typo, it's a full day. Half-day counts as a day. Yes, and we, this, this memo was taken down and replaced for the purposes of, what's the purpose, we took it down for Ms. Grimes. Can you recall my memory why we took this memo? We did take this memo down at one point and we changed it for, for one particular reason. So I think it reverted back to the old memo. That's the only thing that should be corrected. So the 23rd will be a full day of school.
So they'll go for one full day and then?
No, they won't go on the 20th.
The 20th is the?
They will not go to school.
I'm sorry, that should say.
It won't go at all, two full weeks.
Two full weeks.
That's what I thought I heard, but I didn't.
Oh, okay, okay. The 20th is the Friday? Thank you. So it's. I don't have a physical calendar.
You're fine.
Ms. Badger, we're just testing you.
Yeah, I think so. I couldn't, I literally can't tell you how many, how many calendars I looked at. I was like, this can't be right. Why would we go to school for a half-day?
The holiday recess will begin on that day. There will be no school.
On the 23rd.
23rd. We would have limited participation.
That is a Monday. I was thinking that this was the Friday, but the Friday is the 20th, yep. The Friday is the 20th, which will be a full day, not a half-day.
Thank you.
I don't know, I don't know what happened there.
Friday, Friday, the 20th.
It was very well received by families when we did it last time. Yes, so the Friday, the 20th is the last day before the break. The 23rd is a full day off, the beginning of that break.
With the understanding of that one fix on Monday, the 23rd, as the first full day of vacation.
Yes, the holiday recess begins on that day.
Yes, we can still vote this. Yep, absolutely, Mr. Morgan.
I move to approve the school dates as amended.
And that's seconded by Ms. Badger. Is there any other questions on this calendar for next year? I think they're going to love us.
I know.
They're coming back on the Friday? No. They're coming back on Friday, the 3rd?
No, they're coming the following week. That's the last, that's the last day of the vacation.
It's very confusing, yeah.
It's the same, it's the same way we presented it last year, the memo in terms of the content. That is the last day of the vacation. The weekends don't count because we don't, we're not in session anyways.
Any other questions? We'll vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. I do recall now why we took, we took it down because originally our October professional development day.
Everybody voted in favor.
Oh, wait, wait, Chris, I'm sorry.
Our October professional development day fell on the college board's SAT day, which we found, which was published after we proposed the dates. So we had to immediately take it down and so that was the error.
Is that correct on here?
That is correct on here.
But, okay.
We'll make sure, Ms. Grimes, we'll make sure that you have everything set.
Yeah, I want to send them all a hard copy tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay, let's go to the next item, which is job descriptions.
Yes, we have two job descriptions tonight. Again, a few of our clerical positions. The first is the preschool secretary position, which works in this building, in the PCC. And as you notice, you'll see the 190 days, that's how we delineate based on the contract. And with the secretarial contract, all the titles will match as well. And really, a lot of this is dealing with the organization of the peers that come to the program as well and the recruitment and things of that nature, especially from area preschools and transitioning and things like that and works with the principal on all of those different pieces. So there's a lot of intake evaluation screenings, interventions with Head Start, there's a lot of different pieces like that. So that is this position. It's also consistent with our other clerical positions, but it is very unique to this, obviously, it's a preschool, so.
Let's discuss, any questions on this with Ms. Badger?
Just kind of the same comment I made last week, we just need to make full sentences, full sentences with periods at the end of them.
With the periods at the end, yep.
And then 19, and I could, I'm not sure. So processes tuition payments and deposits to town hall, is it at town hall or to town hall?
They go to town hall to do the, the turnover paperwork.
Yeah, actually, I was going to, I was going to question.
Yeah, it is.
Don't they go through, Mr. Costin?
They, actually, they go thems, there's a point person who goes and does the turnover paperwork, so, and she goes to town hall to do that. But it's all through his process and protocol. It's called a turnover form that we do through all the, all the different buildings do that.
Let me understand that.
Yep.
Excuse me. These are tuition payments. So there could be, is this person bonded to carry this cash to town hall? Yes?
We, we have a number of staff who handle checks and go directly to town hall to make deposits. We have insurance, it's called dishonest employee bonding is something that, that's kind of a thing of the past. We use, we have this blanket policy through the town, through our carrier called dishonest employee, which essentially covers the town against any potential losses.
Amazing.
But that's, we
But that's, we, we have a number of checks and balances through our financial process. And again, we're not...
I wasn't addressing, I wasn't addressing somebody's integrity, I was addressing their risk.
Correct. And what, we don't handle cash, we handle, if there's cash involved, it's a whole different story. So we don't accept cash.
Any other questions, Ms. Badger?
Well, Ms. Hayward just clarified my confusion, so it might, maybe it should read processes tuition payments and deposits it to Town Hall. Deposits to Town Hall? If we put it, it might clarify.
Yep. Okay. Yep. Because processes is plural.
And makes deposits at Town Hall.
Makes deposits at Town Hall.
Yeah, makes deposits to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, with, with that amendment, we can vote on this.
What is it? Thank you, I got that.
We have to have a motion.
Mr. Selly, you have a motion?
I move.
Thank you. Seconded by Ms. Burgess. Any, any other questions? Okay, we'll vote this one. And now we have data processing.
Yes, this is the data processing secretary that we have at the secondary schools, and this is really something, I apologize, because these get a little blurry to me once in a while, so I do appreciate your feedback, in that they really do a lot with transcripts and student scheduling, and there's a great deal to it, the facilitation of the building schedule. There's a lot of different competency reporting, based on our vocational students as well, and the identification of those, and the accurate identification of that. So, but they're also a person in the building who works with the teachers a great deal on, in the input of grades for the whole report card process. So that is our data processing secretary, which is a 220 position.
Ms. Burgess moves the recommendation on this one. Is there a second? Ms. Hunt is the second. Are there any questions? Okay, we'll vote on it. Excellent. Reports and proposals from committee members. The floor is open. Ms. Hunt?
I know Dr. Miestis talked about the meeting with the delegates to Japan. We had a DVC meeting afterwards, so we're getting things in place with that. We're still working on trying to get some information together for the gift, and, you know, hopefully, we'll be sending profiles over to Japan soon. And other than that, I mean, it's only been a week, so we haven't done a whole lot, but I know last week I reported out that the cheerleading team was going to states, and I'm happy to say that they came in fourth out of 12 teams. Probably not going to get them to nationals, but there's a small chance they could get, like, a bid, which they'll find out tomorrow if that happens. And if that's the case, in two weeks, they are probably going to try to make it to Myrtle Beach. So they did a good job.
Reports and proposals, committee members.
I just wanted to say, I went to Little Mermaid Jr. this weekend.
Enjoyed it?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I was sitting with Stephen Cardenas. He had the ticket next to me. Yeah, it was, it was interesting, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Frye, personnel report.
No.
Just a few personnel reports. We have three classified appointments, one maternity leave that is actually being extended, and four resignations to report.
Thank you. Any questions? From anybody?